It is 7:05 and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, we'll start with Commissioner Gary.
You guys ready?
Present.
All right.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Mateo.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Here.
Absent are Chairman Kuchera and Commissioner Lesniak.
All right, so with the chairman absent and our usual backup chairman, Mr. Lesniak, absent, we need a...somebody to chair the meeting. Does anyone have a motion to appoint somebody temporary chair?
I move Jill.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right. All right, Superintendent Mateo, take it away.
Do you want to move over to the center? Oh, no, you've got your laptop.
All righty. I've never done this before.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is going to be the approval of the minutes.
All right. Darhere motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearing of June 22nd, 2016.
So moved.
Second? All right. Any discussion, any changes? All right. All right. Okay. Commissioner Gary.
Aye. Aye, yeah.
That'll work. Commissioner Marhol.
Abstain.
Commissioner Mateo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and public hearing meetings from July 14th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I do have one correction. Um, no, maybe I don't. Never mind. It's on the 14th, okay.
Everyone else good?
Where was it?
She didn't.
No. Oh, no? Okay. Sorry. All righty, Commissioner Gary.
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo.
Abstain.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Abstain.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
All right, abstains go with the ayes, correct?
Correct.
Motion passes.
Do we have any petitions or visitor comments?
Looks like none. Trustee Pollock, any comments? All right. So we can move on to our public hearing. We shall open it.
Yeah, this is a continued public hearing from June 22nd, we just need to reopen it.
All right. Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, yes.
Anybody like to move to reopen our public hearing?
So moved.
PZ 16 dash 010.
So moved.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sonya, would you like to bring us up to date, or do I need...we don't need to read...
Yeah, we don't need to re-read everything in. Grab my notes here. So we are continuing to discuss vacation rentals. At the last meeting, there were some recommended changes to the proposed text, which included lightening the restrictions on food and beverages, excluding house swapping from vacation rental regulations, removing parking requirements for vacation rentals, and adding a proximity requirement for owners and agents. So staff has incorporated those changes into the draft text, and you will note those changes are in blue, so you can kind of see the progression of the changes. So new text is in red, and even newer text is in blue. We did review other communities in regards to proximity requirements for vacation rentals, and most communities require that the owner or their local agent be available 24/7 during the rental period to address any complaints or concerns. They also require that the contact information be posted at the property and that it be provided to the village's police and fire departments. So the revised text amendment includes that requirement as well. That is basically the new. Just to give a little bit of background to anybody watching at home, the proposed vacation rentals will be adding to our business regulations, so this would require a licensing for anybody that wants to do vacation rentals for their home, they would have to get licensed with the village. In addition, it is requiring some zoning code amendments. So vacation rentals would be required to obtain a special use permit if they are located in any of our residential districts, they would be permitted in our business districts. And I guess we can open it up to further discussion. At the last meeting, Chairman Kuchera had wanted to continue this for further discussion since Commissioner Lesniak was unable to attend that meeting. Unfortunately, Commissioner Lesniak apparently is unable to attend this meeting as well, so I'll open it up to your discussion, and then maybe we can move on to closing the public hearing and actually getting a motion on the proposed text amendment, depending on what your comfort level is with that.
I guess I'll open my big mouth first, as usual, or not as usual, but open my big mouth, as usual. I think it was Dave that mentioned way back when that there...that there are limitations on where we can put the B and Bs, that there are geographical limitations. Am I correct in assuming there are none?
No.
So it can be R1A, R1AA?
Correct. They are special uses also in any of the residential districts, and they are permitted uses, I believe, in our business district.
As long as they meet the requirements, including parking spots for each room.
Yeah. But there's no geogra...he talked, he spoke about, or at least I understood him, to speak about some sort of geographical limitation that we should...that we should consider a similar limitation for this, but nothing.
No, we don't have that in our ordinance.
Okay. I have several other comments. I had sent you a bunch of comments, Sonya, and I guess I'd like to understand why they aren't useful, or...well, let's put it the other way. Let's say that I think these are valid, and I'd like the commission to consider them, even though they aren't in this draft. And some of these are not, I don't feel hard over about, I'm just sort of throwing them out. In the application process, it seems to me we are requiring all of the people that have a vacation rental to submit an application every year, and in that application, we've listed out the things they have to have, certificate of insurance, and so on and so forth. We're also requiring that they keep a log of all of their attendees, or all of the people that they rent to. Wouldn't it be helpful for us to understand them, as long as they have that copy, when they go to renew an application, to ask them for a copy of that log? Is that a reasonable thing to do? And in addition to that, I would suggest that we also ask them for their internet address, and so that we can see how it is that they're talking about Riverside. I mean, we certainly don't want somebody out there that's, well, that's taking a negative view of the city, but we...it seems to me those are the kinds of things we should be at least taking a quick look at to see...see how they're doing.
So who is the "we"? Do you mean staff, or do you mean PZC? Who's going to be doing the work?
Well, the application comes into the village, and the village has to look at this application to make sure that these things are there, the insurance statement, that no person has a felony, co-owners, you know, proof the application has at least 25 percent ownership. So it's...it doesn't take...I don't think it takes a great deal of time, but if we do get into any disputes with them, we...it kind of seems to me it'd be nice to have something in advance that sort of we can look at and say, hey, you know, you've been saying you're doing this, and in fact, you're doing that, or something different. I don't know.
We can certainly...
It's not asking anything more of them, it's just sort of getting more information. We can put it in the file and not do anything with it. On the other hand, it may come in handy. We may want to do some statistical analysis, for instance, of what kind of people we have, how many days we actually have, and whatnot. It's an idea.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly add email address to the application that we create for this, so that they provide that. I mean, we ask for email addresses and websites on our regular business applications, so that can easily be incorporated into that. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for a copy of their log annually with their renewal application, so I think that can easily be...easily be accommodated.
Okay. The next item.
Joel, did you want to comment on that item?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we need to be keeping a record of every visitor. I would be all right with a summary of the usage. We don't need to have people's names in the village files.
Well...
I tend to agree with that. Their log, I presume, would be name, probably contact information. I don't know that the village would have a legitimate need to have that in its records.
So we could just have a summary of dates rented in the year?
Correct. And the number of people.
And they could be...they could do it by redacting names and information of that type, just by blocking out the private information. I don't want to put a lot of paperwork burdens on them. I'm not sure the lawyer in our house here is looking at this favorably.
I...you know, I'm a little concerned about having the names and all the contact information of the guests become a public record once they're in our possession. What we've sometimes done in...in...when we make people keep logs, whether it's for, say, like a cash for gold or whatever, is if we want to inspect them, we have a right to, we could say something along those lines if we have a need to identify a particular person or something. Otherwise, I think a summary might be a better way to go.
Okay. Well, of course, we do have the right already in here to inspect it anytime we want, so... but by the same token, I don't want to create a lot of paperwork for these people to do either. I don't want it to be a hindrance. In section 326.5, this is page two of the printout, at the very end, just before the start of the second sentence, it starts...the very last sentence reads, "In order for a license to issue a vacation rental..." I think that's meant to be "to be issued." And then...
Where are we again?
On page two, 326.4, license fees, 326...I'm sorry, 326.5.
Okay.
Last two lines. "In order for a license to issue, a vacation rental must comply with..."
Okay.
That's a minor point, but the more serious point in the question is it says, "Vacation rental must comply with all village building, fire property maintenance, and other code requirements and village and state regulations." Now, I happen to be familiar with a carriage house that is got very close to our house. In fact, it's in our backyard. Has a similar setback problem that we had with the treat last week with the garage. That carriage house was built in 1878. It's got a little over two-foot setback from the side yard that is a...an existing, non-conforming building. We aren't intending to do this, but I can see that future owners would very likely want to convert it into a rental property and maybe use it as a B and B. And this doesn't allow for...this says, "All village buildings and other..." must comply...must comply with all village code requirements. Well, it does not. It doesn't...this doesn't allow for...
I'm going to double check here, but I believe if it is a landmarked...
Which it is.
Carriage house, which would be the only way it would be allowed to be used as a dwelling unit.
Yes.
They are an exception to some of our regulations, so I'm just gonna...if you want to go on to the next thing, I'm gonna...like, in the code, it specifically says, I believe, I'm going to double check here, that they're...
Okay, let's assume that's true. There still can be other situations where there are non-compliant, existing non-compliant buildings that a person would want to conduct and have a vacation rental in that building. And the way this...way I read this is that they couldn't do it if it's an existing non-compliant...
So you're saying if somebody's house does not meet the required setback, that this is saying that they could not use it as a vacation rental?
Yes.
Attorney Mars?
Okay. You know, I think generally we would regard a legal non-conforming use as complying with our zoning code, because that is something that's specifically authorized. Legal non-conforming uses are authorized to continue, subject to, you know, the various provisions that would cause them to terminate.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a problem?
It would not be a problem, in my opinion. Sonya, would you agree generally with that interpretation?
Yeah, I would not necessarily say, I mean, I wouldn't say that a non-conforming setback would keep somebody from being able to use it as a vacation rental.
Right. And the same with the situation...
They're allowed to use it as their home, so I don't know why they would not continue to be able to use it as a dwelling unit, rented or not, so...
Well, there are many other circumstances besides setbacks that might be involved, I don't know, bulk. Okay, I'm happy...
We hadn't...I don't think we had envisioned this as being something that would...was a way to try and keep people from being able to do things.
Okay.
So that certainly was not the intent behind it. When it...we're talking about code requirements, we're talking about code requirements specifically related to, so it would be like the parking requirement we were proposing for this, that they would have to be in compliance with our parking requirement that we had added to the zoning code. But now we're taking that back out. This is similar language that is in the code for bed and breakfasts, and I think that's kind of what that was...was saying, that it needed to be in compliance with other code requirements, specifically meaning the fact that it was a special use in the residential areas, and that it, you know, had parking requirements. So if we want to add zoning code requirements in there, or something to make it more clear, I don't know, I don't want to...it's already a fairly wordy paragraph there, I don't know how much more I want to add to it, but if you feel like that's unclear, or the commission feels in general that that's unclear, we can try and wordsmith that a little more.
Frankly, if Attorney Mars feels strongly about it, I'd feel comfortable saying that whoever the attorney might be involved in the future, should the question come up, he would come up with the same judgment, I presume.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm happy with that. I don't think we need to add more words when...if more words aren't needed.
I mean, specifically, we have section 10 dash 10 dash 2 of the zoning code, authority to continue legal non-conforming uses, and, you know, it expresses the intent that these can continue, subject to the provisions of the...of this chapter, so long as it remains otherwise lawful. So I think, you know, they're called legal non-conforming uses for a reason, and there are illegal non-conforming uses, which are different.
Yes, sure.
So I think we're fine.
Okay. Appreciate the comments and the changes, rather, concerning beverages and food, but I'm still concerned about...there seems to be, on page three, under five at the top, we talk about food, and then it says, "Any food," and then down in E, we say that, "Between guests, that opened or perishable food and beverages shall be discarded." Somewhere in that gap, first of all, those two seem to be "any food," so that means there's not even...you're not allowed to leave anything there.
No, it says you can't serve or provide. That would, to me, mean that the guest can bring their own food in.
Yes, but you cannot provide any food.
So this is your concern again, about not being able to provide salt and pepper?
Salt and pepper...
Ketchup.
Packaged goods. I'm thinking of the...when we've experienced vacation rentals and B and Bs in the past with chocolates on the pillow, condiments, breakfast bars, tea, coffee, things of that type. I think, you know, you don't want to have to walk into a place and then go out and buy everything. It's kind of nice to have some of these smaller things there, even if you're...especially if you're arriving late and you want to get up in the morning, it's nice to have a bar or two and a cup of tea that you don't have to go out and do any shopping for. I don't know how to word it exactly, but that's...we've experienced that, I think it's worth seeing, it's worth addressing somehow.
I mean, isn't it just a distinction between prepared food and other food?
Well, packaged food is what they put down here. Uh, where is this thing? Any food?
It says...
Oh, no, it wasn't there. Yeah. I think you put it in your memo, didn't you?
I don't believe so.
And, well, that's my basic point. I would like to see it in, but...
Unpack.
Just the way...okay.
The items I had listed were packaged goods, tea, condiments, a welcome fruit bowl, turned down chocolates.
The issue is, is that we're in a negative here, the way it's written, so we've got a fig...we've got to specifically list what they are not able to provide, so...like you said, it would have to go with like either unpackaged or fresh. Perishable is what I had used for the food that needed to be discarded. Any other commissioners have any ideas for me on how to...to wordsmith a general allowance for packaged goods in the negative?
You could keep it in the negative, and I would actually include beverage, and say, except for...
Meaning prepackaged or individually...
Prepackaged.
Yeah.
Prepackaged individual servings, something along those lines, because what you want to avoid is having an open container that could be tampered with, or whatever.
Exactly. And then I was arguing in the last meeting about, I like the idea of having the agent or the owner of the vacation rental within...I was talking about within a block, two blocks, or measurable yards of the...of the place, so that there's kind of a self-policing action going on. The person is there, if there's any problem, he might even hear the activity, if it's a question of noise, but certainly the people that are there would be able to come over to him or her and raise the issue.
I could not find any community that had that strict of a regulation, so the one that I did find, there was either counties, so they had to live in the same county as that was in...was a 30-mile radius. Some had, you know, for the larger cities, the requirement was that you had to live within the city, you know, you had to be within the city corporate limits, or that authorized agent needed to be within the city corporate limits, have offices or home in that...in that immediate area. What I came up with was the 30-mile radius, that seemed reasonable, that's like an hour drive, to get there to respond to any issue, considering as close as we are to the DuPage County border, to restrict it to just the city, just to the village's corporate limits seemed overly restrictive to me, compared to what other communities are doing, and not necessarily realistic. The other was that, again, being close to the border, if we did the 30-mile radius, that would accommodate somebody that's maybe in Elmhurst, or, you know, something that's just over the county border. 30-mile radius seemed like it was reasonable, somebody could respond fairly quickly to any sort of issue. This is, again, we are restricting this to people who have an ownership interest in the home. So I think at the last meeting, the discussion by most commissioners was that the fact that they had an ownership interest in it, especially if it was their primary residence, was going to be self-regulating in and of itself, because this is their home.
Well, we allow agents.
Excuse me?
We allow agents within that 30 miles.
They have to have a designated agent, doesn't mean that...that they don't own it. You know, like if the owner isn't within the 30-mile radius, then the agent has to be within the 30-mile radius. But still, if it's...somebody has an ownership interest in it, they're not going to want it to just go to pot. If we want to be more strict, we can say that only people who have 100% owner interest in their unit can be doing this, so it has to be their primary residence, and hopefully that would self-regulate better, because they obviously have to come home and clean up after these people in order to continue living in their home.
The way I read this, what I'm trying to avoid is absentee landlords coming in and buying property, changing the real estate market to a rental market as opposed to a residential market. I want to keep the market as a residential market, I want people coming here, buying homes, who are interested in living here. Now, they may be for a short term, maybe they're assigned to Vancouver or something, but they can hire an agent locally, and that agent could be 30 miles away, or it could be in Berwyn, or it could be somebody in Riverside. But it's conceivable that the owner is going to be hundreds, thousands of miles away, and the agent then becomes the person that's involved here.
But with limits of 60 days a year, that's not going to be very profitable, I don't think that, while it's possible, I don't think it's very likely to happen.
But if you're only out of your house for so long, because you're on a temporary duty someplace, it could happen.
So...
No, they're restricted...
To 60 days.
To 60 days in a calendar year, 60 rental days in a calendar year.
Yes, I realize. So if you've got a four-month, six-month assignment, 60 days out of the...is two months out of the six years...six months. Okay, I'm beating a dead horse, I'm losing the argument. No sense, I won't continue. Let's go on, I think I have one more here someplace. Yeah, again, we have the 30 consecutive days is mentioned three times. Again, I don't like this idea of repeating information, I'd rather say the number of days stated in section so-and-so, or something like, "This paragraph is subservient to paragraph so-and-so, such that if a mistake is made, and if there is..." If somebody corrects only two of the 30 days, and not the third one, and we go to 45 days in two places, and 30 days in another, it's clear as to which is the controlling factor. But I'm beating a dead horse on that one, too. My last comment, I believe, is, on page five, 326.10, license revocation. "If a vacation rental license is revoked for any cause, no license shall be granted to any person for a period of three years from the date of revocation." That says that if the license is revoked from a group of bad guys, because they weren't performing properly, that good guys come in and buy it and want to do the same thing, they cannot get a license for three years. I left out a whole bunch of words that put those qualifying people in there, but I think that's being unnecessarily restrictive.
That's not how I interpret it.
Well, read it without those word...read it the way I read it, with skipping over from, "No license..." Let's see, where is it? "No license shall be granted to any person," and then you have to skip over, "for the operation of a vacation rental at the premises described in the revoked license or the revoked licensee, and that his or her co-owners, or the partners, members, managers, or officers, or any owning partnership, limited liability corporation, limited liability company or corporation, for a period of three years from the date of revocation." If you jump over all that stuff in between, we've said that, "No license shall be granted to any person for a period of three years from the date of revocation." Am I reading it wrong?
To any person in the village?
I...I think the commissioner's correct in the way he interprets that.
Anybody.
Yeah.
At that...who owns that premises.
And the premises described, yeah.
For three years.
That clause.
Right. Yeah. So we're penalizing the property, not the people, but... Yeah, so, we're penalizing the property, not the people, but-
Although we are penalizing the people, too.
Well, yes, okay, we're canceling their license.
And they can't get another license to operate anywhere in the village-
Yes.
-for three years.
Right. I grant you that.
And that property is off the table for a vacation rental for three years?
For anyone.
For anyone.
Is that what we want? I don't think so. If they sell the property to good, if the bad guys sell it to good guys, why shouldn't the good guys be allowed to start a new business?
Well, from the staff's standpoint, of me having to be the one dealing with the fallout of having to revoke a license, and the neighbors that have probably called to complain about said licensees at that premises. I think it would be helpful for them to have a certain level of comfort that for at least three years, they will have some peace and quiet. Before somebody else can try this again. Hopefully it will go better, but you already have neighbors on either side with a bad taste in their mouth from somebody having to get their license revoked. So, from my standpoint, I think that, yes, is it restrictive on somebody else coming in that would buy the house and try to do this? Yes, but on the other hand, it's also protecting the neighbors and saying, "Okay, you lodged a complaint. We've stopped this. We're going to make sure this doesn't have, happen again with these people, and the next people that come in, if they want to do this, they're going to have to wait for that three-year period to go through." It's an olive branch for having a very bad situation happen next to them.
But it is a special use, so it does require a public hearing.
Yes.
And so if Tom Cruise comes in and buys the property from the bad guys, and people are happy with Tom Cruise-
They might have been happy with the ones before that applied for the first special use and didn't think there was going to be anything wrong with it, and then there was. So, you know, as try as we might, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it, if we feel like we're being too restrictive with that. I think that's just staff's standpoint, and we have similar regulations, again, for the bed and breakfast. I think that mimics that language in the bed and breakfast regulations as well. So, in the effort of consistency, that was in there. But if the commission feels like we should be more lenient where it comes to vacation rentals, we can certainly look at changing that.
Attorney Mars?
I mean, I think some of the intent here, and as an example, something that we've encountered with one of our municipal clients is they revoke a license of a liquor licensee or a convenience store, and what happens is it reopens two weeks later with allegedly different owners, but it seems, and the suspicion is, it's just being swapped among a group of people, um, and we get the same behaviors. And just because somebody else's name is on it is no guarantee that the behavior's going to change. So, I think what Sonia was saying is kind of this, you know, we're going to let this property rest for a while. It can be used for anything else other than a vacation rental during that time, you know, a long-term rental, or residence, or whatever. But, but if it gets to a point where the license has been revoked for cause, it's probably because there was a lot of problems in the neighborhood. And so I think that's, you know, the intent behind it, that doesn't mean that what you're saying is not the way we could do it. And I think, you know, obviously, I think that's a good point about the special use, that we will be sitting here and talking to the proposed owner. But, but that, I think, is the intent behind it. That's what I explained.
Anybody else have any comments on that? Strong feelings one way or the other?
I think it makes sense as the program rolls out. It's probably not likely to become an issue, but if it is, it gives the neighbors some protection, and it allows more, or new good neighbors to develop, hopefully. Anything else, Dennis?
Nope.
Okay.
I've run my gauntlet.
Joel?
Okay, going back to the food and beverage before we move on, sorry.
Sure.
I mean, based on the comments I wrote, uh, "No vacation rental licensee shall serve or otherwise provide any food or beverages other than food or beverages that are prepackaged and sealed by the manufacturer for individual serving." Does that work for everybody? I mean, that sort of takes the fruit bowl you were suggesting out, um, but it does allow them to, you know, provide the bars and some other things.
I guess tea is considered prepackaged, even though it's a little bit of a tiny bit of glue or something.
Yep. Okay.
Sounds good.
Joel?
My question was with regards to 3-26-8, item B, which allows occupancy for one person for every 125 square feet. Is that the same square footage as is in the B&amp;B requirement or not?
I believe so. Let me pull this up really quick. Title III. Check for 25. Yes. And that's under, you finding it already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Would there be issues with deviating from the B&amp;B square footage requirement? I mention this because one of the issues that seems to get publicity is the large number of people who are sometimes found at said vacation rentals. And based on a quick numbers tally of our bulk requirements, generally, we seem to assume about one person for every 450 to 300 square feet of house. And I would be more comfortable upping the number to 250. So, one person for every 250 square feet of dwelling. This would mean a 1,500-square-foot house could accommodate, say, six people rather than 12, and a 2,500-square-foot house could accommodate, would be allowed to accommodate 10 people rather than 20, which would seem to be more in the realm of our typical residential use.
I'm thinking a family, a family of four, then it requires a thousand-square-foot apartment of something, of some kind.
The standard is probably 125, based on-
That's part of the fire code?
I don't know. I did not, I have to admit to not looking that up.
Right, I don't, certainly I don't think there's a legal issue for going up if anyone wanted to increase the square footage that's required.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't go down.
Does 250 seem reasonable to everybody, or do they feel the need to change it?
That might be too restrictive on who can be eligible, if they don't have the space.
For the apartments, mainly. I think that would fall harder on the apartment or condo owners as opposed to homeowners.
Yeah. Maybe compromise at 175 or something.
I'd say round numbers at 200.
Well, maybe 250. 200, good.
So, I'd say two people, that would be 400 square feet. I'd say most of our condos would probably accommodate that fairly easily.
Hopefully. We okay with that?
Yep, 200.
200?
200, yeah.
That's reasonable.
So moved.
Before I forget, at least the online version of the bed and breakfast code says 125 feet, not square feet.
Okay.
Anything else, Joel?
No, thank you.
Teresa?
Nothing.
The only question I had was in section 33-26-3, the very last sentence in sub-paragraph D. The restriction or prohibition on on-street overnight parking is elsewhere in the code. Do we need to have it here?
Um, no, I had added in there just because the commission had asked that we make it clear that on-street parking overnight is not permitted at the last discussion, at the last meeting, so I had just made a point to put that in there. But we can certainly reference, um, just reference the code.
I can just say, any overnight parking must be accommodated on the site in compliance with the code or something.
Where was that again?
3-26-3, which is, so this is going to be on page two.
Got it.
Towards the top D, it's in blue. In accordance with... I'll have to check what the code reference will be. I'm assuming it's going to be in our traffic code, but it might be our public ways, or code. Or we could just say, in accordance with village code. That'd probably be-
Yes.
The easiest to do.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
That would probably be, adding a letter on there would probably be the easiest way to accommodate adding, providing some sort of log with the renewal, if we wanted to do that in that section. We could add a letter E there. If we want them to, as Commissioner Giri had discussed earlier, provide us with some sort of-
Summary.
Summary list of usage during the previous year. Would that be okay? Or do we want to kind of steer clear from-
Or what?
Specific reporting?
I'm sorry, what was the "or"?
Or do we want to steer clear of specific reporting at renewal?
I thought a summary was a good idea because it gives the village an opportunity to assess where this is going in terms of usage.
So, number of nights and number of people?
Correct.
And actually, now that you mention, um, perhaps letter D is not, no longer appropriate under 326-3 for application information required. It's not really asking for anything. It's more of a restriction, so.
So, I should perhaps go under duties as opposed to-
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's a good point.
I think that's a good point.
So, now it can be D.
So, sticking with parking, um, for the June meeting, I participated by phone, and I could hear some things, not all things. Um, I, my memory of that discussion was overnight parking must be accommodated. I don't remember the on-the-site part. Am I misremembering? I'm looking at you, Teresa.
Well, um, you, I think the intention was simply that they can't park in the street.
Right.
So, it could be another site if they've secured another site.
So, should we strike "on the site" from that sentence, wherever it ends up?
Shall be accommodated off-street. I mean, again, that's implied by the ordinance, but...
Maybe we can put under-
Can we just say overnight parking shall be in compliance with the existing code?
Short, sweet?
I think it's helpful to leave, though, on-street overnight parking is not permitted in the village, just so that's telegraphed to everybody, if you have someone who doesn't maybe thinking of buying or something in there.
Well, maybe that's something we put on the application, then.
Okay. That's good, yeah.
We can just make a note that on the application-
Okay.
It says, it makes note about on-street parking is not-
So, overnight parking must be in conformance of village code?
Mm-hmm.
So, I listened to the Board of Trustees' discussion of this from their April meeting twice, so now it's a total of three times. I need something else to do. Anyway, there are a couple of issues that I think we've already addressed, the parking, the exit sign. Um, I think it was Trustee Lumsden who brought up whether or not these vacation rentals need to be ADA compliant, and I'm assuming that most other ordinances for Airbnb don't address that. And are we okay with that? That we're not insisting that ours be ADA compliant?
I'm okay with that.
I think having to make your home ADA compliant to do 60 days of rental a year would pretty much be a nonstarter. You might as well not.
Consensus?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, good. Um, and then one of the last issues they raised is, should it be a special use, rather than a permitted use everywhere? So, in the residential district, should it be a special use versus permitted?
I definitely think it should be because of the public hearing.
Okay. Well, it looks like our work might be done.
See if there's any public comment.
Any comments from the audience? Mr. Ray? No?
He already vetted this at preservation.
All right. So, we need to close the public hearing?
Correct.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Do you want to get one?
No, I don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Recommendation, or should we get a motion then?
So...
Do you want to maybe have Sonia summarize the changes agreed on tonight?
Yes. Get back to my pages here. So, the proposed changes include adding to the application information required for renewals to provide us with a summary of usage the previous year, including nights and number of nights and number of people for their guests. Included, um, a change to 326-5A, or license to be issued, just a tense change there, and moving the parking requirement from 326-3D down to 326-5 in the departmental duties, license requirements, and standards, and have it say overnight parking shall be in compliance with village code requirements. The next change is also to 326-5 regarding the serving or otherwise providing of food per Attorney Mars's revision, which was?
Um, "serve or otherwise provide any food or beverages other than food or beverages that are prepackaged and sealed by the manufacturer for individual serving to any guest."
Okay. And then the other change was to 326-8B to increase the square footage from 125 square foot per person to 200 square feet for the occupancy load. occupancy load. We did not decide on any change to three-twenty-six-ten for the license revocation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe that is all of the changes that we discussed tonight.
A move we approve? Is that appropriate? Is that what you want?
Yes.
Is there a second?
So it's a recommendation of approval with the changes outlined by staff a moment ago?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Roca?
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Whoops. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Pilateer?
Aye.
Motion passes. This will move on to the Village Board for further discussion.
So we can move on to old business, the discussion of required street yards and a possible text amendment.
Let's see. Just making sure I'm on my correct page here. Thirty-three, thirty-three, okay. That's my other memo. All right, some background. We had the zoning appeal regarding the determination of the minimum street yard back in May. The commission felt that the ordinance is not clear about who determines which means of determining the minimum street yard shall be used. The commission discussed this further at your June meeting and asked staff to draft an ordinance that clarifies how the street yard is determined and better codifies the way staff has been interpreting this section of the zoning ordinance. The street yard is defined as the open space between the closest point of the principal building, which includes the eaves or drip line, to any portion of a property line that abuts a street. Zoning code ten-dash-four-dash-three-D states that the minimum street yard in each lot shall be measured from the closest point of the existing principal building line, which includes the eaves or drip line, to the street lot line. The street yard dimension shall be as indicated in one of the following manners, and then it lists six different ways the street yard can be determined based on certain circumstances. So staff has proposed a text amendment, or a draft text amendment, which would kind of codify the way staff typically determines the street yard. And staff typically determines the street yard by utilizing the current plat of survey in conjunction with the WPA map. And where the WPA map and the survey are in conflict, staff will utilize the current plat of survey. We've prepared revisions to ten-dash-four-dash-three-D, which is the section regarding bulk requirements for street yards, and ten-dash-four-dash-five, Table Three, which is the residential district bulk requirements, to clarify the order of operation when determining the minimum street yard for a residential property. So you have before you the proposed draft text amendment, which is. Which would say that now the street yard would be determined, the minimum street yard on each lot shall be the narrowest dimension as measured from a point on the street lot line to the principal building, which includes the eaves or drip line. On corner and irregularly shaped lots, this minimum dimension will establish the required minimum street yard along the entire street frontage. Says the street yard shall be established through a plat of survey or where a plat of survey is not available in the following manners. And then it lists a couple of options, and then it has the exceptions. So what we have here is now saying that you either have to provide me with a plat of survey for me to determine what the street yard is, and that the street yard is the closest point of your house to the street lot line. If you don't have a plat of survey, then we can either go with the WPA map or where the WPA map does not indicate a street yard or is not current or considered accurate by either the village or the property owner. The street yard dimension may be identified on a new plat of survey prepared by a survey or licensed by the state of Illinois. The expense of the new survey shall be borne by the property owner, except in cases where the village contests the accuracy of the WPA house setback survey. So that kind of codifies that portion of it. So that's A. And then we go to B, and it talks about when a structure is demolished. And we added in there if there is no survey showing the demolished structure and there is no street yard dimension on the WPA map, the street yard shall be that which is indicated on the demolition permit as the prior structure's street yard dimension. And then we just had to change some, some section references in the next one, and then we get to creating C, exceptions, and that's where we moved those couple of exceptions for when the house is not meeting the required rear yard. So when a house is setback from the street line, street lot line, so that the rear yard requirement is not met, the street yard requirement may be reduced to accommodate the required rear yard, provided that the permitted building coverage and impervious surface requirements for the zoning district are not violated. So we added, so we moved that to an exception section from the standard minimum street yard requirements. And then the other exception we have is in cases where maintaining the existing building line along the street frontage and meeting the required side and rear yard requirements shall result in a building coverage on the lot that is less than the thirty percent permitted. Then the building department shall review the proposed building or addition and allow for a reduced street yard to permit the lot to meet the maximum building coverage, provided that all the other yard and coverage requirements are met. So those are those, those are the proposed changes to the minimum street yard determination. And then we also changed in the bulk table that's in ten-dash-four-dash-five, the portion where it references the street yard, we changed that to say the narrowest dimension as measured from the street lot line to the principal building as established pursuant to section ten-dash-four-dash-three-D. So then it references them back to that section rather than trying to condense too much into, you know, such a small space. So those are the proposed changes. Open it up for discussion, see if you feel like Attorney Mars and I nailed it or not, and looking for direction from you as to whether I should move forward with the public hearing for our next meeting. Because I do need to get that published for next week to meet our publication requirements for the August meeting.
Teresa?
Well, so first, I think that the village should not have to pay for the plat of survey, even if they're the ones contesting the WPA. I mean, someone's in here for, you know, they want to do something to their house that would be the reason they're trying to establish their street yard. If, if the village is contesting based on, you know, for instance, the information that you had with the last variance, I just, I think the onerous is on the owner to prove that you are not correct, and they should bear the financial burden of that.
Okay.
Okay. So the other thing I want to do is I drew a sketch because this is the only way that I feel like I can. I just want to confirm that this is what we're talking about, and I suppose I have to kind of pass it around. But if this is the minimum distance to the street lot line, then this whole area becomes the buildable area.
I'll just share that I'm, that was my same concern.
Okay.
I would further take it, she's showing a corner lot here, an arrowhead.
Things exaggerated, but yeah.
Well, nevertheless, it's a possibility.
Right.
I would further say that it's possible that you're going to find different dimensions on each street, and yet the text seems to imply that there is one value for corner lots, so you would have.
It's the minimum.
Too possible. Well, I would suggest that we should have one minimum on one street and the other minimum on the other street.
Well, that's what I'm showing there, which is showing an expanded buildable area, I think. Do we want to pass?
Yeah.
Want to pass this? Sorry that I did not think of it earlier.
And that is how our ordinance currently reads.
It is.
You're right.
It is. But do we want to, do we want to continue with that?
Consider, right.
Is it possible to, rather than specify a minimum distance, does it have to be a distance? Can it not be an area? Like state that the street yard setback is the area between the drip line and the lot line? So then if it varies, it will continue to vary? If you have a varying distance across the lot line? That, even that definition has its challenges, but.
So the concern with the drawing is that it makes almost the entire lot buildable, right? If it.
Well, I don't know that it makes the entire lot. It just, we're not using the building line, which I, you know, I think in the table, the previous implication was, it said something about the building line. Oh, existing building line as indicated on the WPA housing setback survey, as surveyed. So the implication to me there is that we're using the building line as the definition of the street yard, not this minimum distance.
I don't read it that way. The street yard measured from the closest point of the existing building line, including eaves, to street lot line. So it's a point to the street lot line.
And it's the minimum.
But it's the minimum.
It's the minimum point.
And if it's, if it's a corner lot.
And we do have some instances of that. I can think of one that recently sold where on one corner it was maybe eight feet off of the property line, and then as you went around the corner, because it was one of our nice little arrowhead kind of lots, on the other side it was like twenty-five feet, but on the one opposite corner it was only eight, and that was therefore the minimum street yard for that lot the entire way around was eight feet.
Yeah.
Now that they've come in for anything to fill in that area at this point, but I suppose the other contention on that one would be is a lot of those, not necessarily all of them, but a lot of those type of lots are not conforming on rear yards or side yards either. So they kind of have a whole host of problems, and that may be the only buildable area that they.
But the.
That they have.
Caveat that you have in here allows you to encroach on the street yard to make their thirty percent. So you do have an option to allow the thirty percent or get, gain that space back. But I'm with Teresa on the idea that with that minimum dimension, you're specifying that one minimum dimension anywhere on the lot then gives the entire lot carte blanche to set that eve line.
Right. I'd be more comfortable picking two, so you have one on one corner and one on the other, to maintain, you know, to maintain some consistency along one road and some consistency along the other road, as opposed to just having one.
I still think that you would have this situation where you have a much larger buildable area than is existing, which I feel like is what we're trying to avoid. Because.
If, the way you've drawn this, I'm seeing the same dimension on both sides.
It's not the same dimension. This is the dimension to this corner, and this is the dimension to that corner.
Okay, so.
And so now all of this.
Light on ten and twenty.
I mean, maybe this is twenty and this is ten.
Okay, now I understand.
Yes, Mr. Palick?
Thank you, Commissioner Palick. It is exactly, I was trying to straighten that out in my mind, how that works, but not in relation to corner lots, but to any lot. You know, my house, the closest setback is, let's say, ten feet for discussion purposes, but it's got other portions of that, how faces the front lot line, it's eighteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
So that gap, I could build it there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I wasn't clear on that, and that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood it.
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had was in terms of clarifying this, right now it says the WPA survey or a current plat of survey of the WPCPA survey is wrong or unclear. Assuming that no one's built any additions without a permit since nineteen-thirty-three, what's the difference between what it exists right now? Why don't, why don't we just say the current closest point is the setback?
I think that's what I'm trying to say here.
Get rid of the reference to WPA, because unless someone's built an illegal addition, the current setback is going to be the same as nineteen-thirty-three. And then you'd have to come up with a label which about vacant lots and stuff like that. But it just seems, that WPA thing just seems to not necessarily confuse everything.
Well, we ran into that problem a couple weeks ago where there was this very short front yard, and everybody, nobody can verify that the house didn't burn down and somebody else built one further back, and that there was an earlier building there.
I guess I'm suggesting would have clarified that, because whatever the setback is right now, that's your front setback.
Well, but that works against the entire intent, which is to preserve the variation, you know, purpose and intent. The variability of residential setbacks from streets is identified as a noteworthy historic characteristic for every side and a valuable aspect of the village's status as a national registered historic landscape district. Therefore, the village desires to maintain variability and not allow it to be diminished over time. That's what's been driving me. I mean, I'd be much happier with something that's simpler to administer.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that the existing setbacks on homes right now are the same as, as the WPA. There should be no discrepancy, right?
No, we had that, that problem two weeks, three weeks.
No, we had, two weeks ago we had the problem of disagreement.
It's supposed to be a month ago.
A month ago, whatever. Yeah, we just had the problem of a disagreement between whether to go by the WPA standards or go by the current survey. And I just, I'm failing to see how the WPA survey comes into play.
Attorney Mars?
One thought I had about what you're saying is, we know the WPA was put in as the measurement in the, when was it, Richard, the eighties or nineties? But what about that gap between when the WPA was created and when the WPA was the front yard setback? I don't know what the front yard setbacks were in the code during that time, so people could well have legally built stuff that was different than the WPA map, right? But that, so, so I don't think, I don't think we can say that the WPA is as, locks in everything as it should be today, because until that was set as the minimum setback, we don't know what the minimum setback was, although we could probably research that.
So is that the reason for the two-fold test, the WPA or survey? Because you could have had additions, legal additions, in that gap time?
Mm-hmm. I think the idea was that if somebody can provide us with a plat of survey, that's where we're going to go with. There may be people that don't have a plat of survey, and then that allows us the opportunity to use the WPA as a reference point, since we feel that that is one of our most accurate records that we have for every house in town. So, you know, we can go to demolition permits, we can go to the WPA map in cases where somebody doesn't have a plat of survey. If our backup of the WPA survey shows nothing, then we have, you know, then maybe we need to require a new survey to be provided, or, you know, if it's a vacant lot, then, you know, we can take the average street yard.
Yeah, I didn't realize there was such a huge gap between the WPA and establishing the WPA as the standard.
Yeah, I don't think the WPA was established until, I want to say it was the nineties.
But the reality is of the ordinance.
Even the way that you've written.
Even the way that you've written it basically indicates that if there is a difference between the WPA and a plat of survey, that the plat of survey rules.
Yes.
And therefore, if the plat of survey always rules, then that means what is existing also rules.
Correct.
And therefore, the WPA map becomes irrelevant.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have a problem with that. I was just pointing out that there may have been a time where people could have legally built further up than the WPA map showed.
But we're not saying that if the WPA map shows, let's say, a 50-foot setback, but the existing building is only 20 feet. We're saying the 20 feet is the setback.
Right, right.
And vice versa, which is how we apply to, you know...
So I think one way to look at it from a policy perspective is if, if everyone's satisfied that there's adequate variation now based on where the houses are and that meets the intent of, of how the plan was set up, that it's fine just to go with how everything is now. Sort of reset everything.
And if we don't agree with that statement, then we need to rewrite the ordinance, because that's not what it says right now. What it says right now is that existing, yes, is what we're maintaining.
No. What it says now, what it says now is the WPA is ruling.
My proposed changes, I think, is what she's referencing now. I think, I don't believe it changed anything.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes. It did change it and clarify it.
Yes.
I don't believe that it changed it. It said the same thing before. It just makes it more clear.
Right, right. There was arguably, arguably some room for argument. So that's why we're trying to clarify that the existing survey rules. Where you're at, at the closest point, is the closest you are allowed to get to your street lot line.
Provided there is one, a survey.
Right. If there's not a survey, then we can use the WPA or you'll have to go get yourself a new survey.
So the ordinance number at the end of the bulk requirements section says 2006. It doesn't necessarily mean all of it's from 2006, but I would guess that... Based on, I'm basing that partly on comments Commissioner Lesniak, Commissioner Katera has said that that's, they were there when they put in that. So...
Did you have more?
No.
Commissioner Gary, comments?
I'm befuddled, but I'm just going to let it go. I, it seems, the way I've read this thing in the past and the way I've read it now, before we made any changes, I thought WPA was the basis, was the bible. We stuck to that because it had the closest thing we had that went back to the original historic characteristics of Riverside. And we are now abandoning that and saying, whatever's out there now, that's the new standard. And if we lost something, we lost something. So we, I just don't agree with that at all. But there were some other points I think I had. Oh, yeah. Well, we're abandoning the WPA, so forget about it. It's unimportant.
We're not abandoning it. We're just changing the order of importance.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, all right. Well, I was going to suggest that we put a paragraph at the end that explains the WPA survey and that it includes or doesn't include, I never can remember, porches or drip lines and that relative specifically, so that we can use it relative to this issue that's hanging out there on Scottswood, that enclosed porches that are, have HVAC are not considered porches. They're considered additions. Somewhere, I'd like to nail that down. Because otherwise, this thing is drifting out there in, in the ionosphere and somebody who's going to want to pull it down, we're going to have to go to battle again with it. I think we all agree that an open porch, okay, is an open porch. They can rebuild what was out there. But if it's an open porch, they're making it look like an open porch, but it's enclosed and it's fully heated and ventilated, electrical.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
Well, an outstanding issue is before the board in September for them to make their final decision on whether that variance, and that has nothing to do with this, right?
This doesn't affect that at all.
This change.
Okay.
I have no number that shows me what the setback was when it had the porch on. The number that's on the WPA matches the number that's on their survey currently. So there was not really a discrepancy in that particular case on the Scottswood one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So regardless of what they want to put on the front of their house, their street yard is from the eve line of their house to the street lot.
The other part of what I was going to put in the WPA paragraph was that if new information is found from F, that was not included in the WPA survey between its 1933 and 1951 range, or whatever that timeframe is, if there's new data out there that shows something that those people didn't have at that time, that that new data should be folded into the WPA survey. And for instance, they have that picture in Scottswood from 19, whatever it was, 1918 or something. That, to me, is new data. You can make an estimate of what the distance is. You can, you know, proportion the lines. It's not going to be exact, but you can get pretty close. And I think that kind of data should be added as an addendum to the WPA drawing.
But if it was an open front porch, then do we want to be reducing their street yard?
If I was to document whatever was there, I'm saying that new data, when it's found, if it relates, I can't remember what the WPA shows, whether it was porch.
It does not show porch.
Okay. But suppose there's somebody else who has a picture of that house that we were talking about a couple of weeks ago that looks like it was built about, you know, World War II? And maybe it was a burnt house that was a teardown or something else? And maybe it was put up? And that's why the setback is so different on the WPA compared to what is there now?
Okay.
If somebody were to suddenly come up with an old plat of survey from 1938, which preceded the teardown of that building, and it showed that there was an earlier frontage or an earlier, a smaller front yard, then I think we should have a paragraph in here that says the WPA drawing can be amended when newer data is found. That's all.
But this is about measuring street yards. I don't know that it'd be appropriate for this section of the ordinance. Would it?
Well... Well, it is the one that discusses, it's the only place the WPA is discussed.
Yes, absolutely.
So I guess this really would be the only place to address that, unless we want to create a new place to...
Probably not.
Although I suppose we could always add that to the definition.
So we're talking about amendments that wouldn't necessarily impact the street yard measurement, but just that?
Basically, to be continuing to update the WPA maps.
Yes. When data becomes available?
For historical purposes?
Well, if it's going to have, the way I'm hearing this conversation going, it has no utility in here anymore. That's why I'm saying, I don't even think I should mention this paragraph at the end. I mean, I don't understand how you could not have a plat of survey and then we fall back to the WPA. If you don't have a plat of survey, there's a, you call a surveyor and you get a plat of survey of the current situation. What is the problem? Why would you not have a plat of survey? I mean, it's either in the demolition or it's in, it's somewhere out there or you can get one.
We have some houses that have been under the same ownership for a number of years. And we do not have a plat of survey on file for houses in town.
So if they want to do anything on that house, they have to produce what for you? Don't they have to produce a plat of survey?
At this point, no. I will allow the use of the WPA map. I will use a Google map. So if somebody wants to replace their driveway, you know, repave their driveway, typically I would ask for a plat of survey with that. If, you know, the kind 80-year-old woman that comes to my counter because she needs to get her driveway replaced, but she doesn't have a plat of survey, she doesn't know what her husband did with it before he passed away, et cetera, et cetera, I'll print out a Google map or something from our GIS and just tap that mark. Okay, this is the area of the driveway that's being replaced.
But I mean, if somebody's building a whole addition, if they want to put...
Yeah, I mean, in that case, I'm going to ask for a survey. If they don't have anything to provide me, they're probably going to have to provide a grading plan as well if it's 400 square feet or more. So, but I mean, I'm not going to require somebody to get a whole new plat of survey because they want to put a deck on the back of their house or because they want to replace their driveway.
I agree. But if you're going to do something in the front of the house, you're going to, a major addition of significance, you're, I don't see any circumstances under which we're going to need a WPA survey anymore with this word. We can just remove all references to the WPA? I think that's what we're doing. I mean, you're not hurting me.
I would say, I would say still just reference it for the sake of vacant lots.
Of what?
Vacant lots.
Okay.
Is there something on the WPA that indicates a setback? I think we talked about that. Or getting the average of the, average of the block. You can get that from the WPA map.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks. I mean, if we want to just completely abandon the WPA, that's...
Actually, that your description is accurate. Because with a previously demoed house or a vacant lot, you could go back to the WPA. And that's clearly in your items being seen. If there isn't a dimension on the WPA, then here are some options you have. But you're going to refer to that WPA as opposed to... So the WPA, Dennis, does retain its utility.
Do you have other comments, Commissioner Mars?
I simply agree with Teresa's concerns about the minimum dimension.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Nothing else. I just wasn't sure after we went on, on that topic raised by Commissioner Gary, whether we actually addressed Commissioner Palatier's concern? Or how are we going to...
If there's another way.
Right.
For the corner lots.
Yeah, short of that, I have nothing more to add.
So as part of that discussion, when you have a corner lot, what does the WPA show? Does it show building?
It will typically only show one dimension. Yeah, it typically only shows one dimension.
And so can we, rather than using a dimension, use terminology that it's the area between the street lot line and the drip line is considered the front, the street yard? So you're defining an area rather than a minimum dimension.
Okay. Similar to what trustee Pollock had brought up. If you have a house that has something that juts out and then comes back.
Right.
This currently would be considered buildable area for you. Yeah, this is the street out here. You know, say this is your garage and, you know, not that we like that in the village, but just in case there's something out there. This is a buildable area here because this is the closest point.
Right.
If we go to the drip line all along the house, this is no longer considered a buildable area. So that's taking away something that people currently have as buildable area. Like somebody could put a porch here if they wanted to and it wouldn't encroach. And they wouldn't need to get a variance in order to be able to do it. So long as it didn't go past, you know, that.
Or what would happen, what would happen in a teardown?
In a teardown, this closest point is established as the new, as the setback for the new house. And so the new house could not go any closer to that point. So they may build the whole new one like that. In fact, I believe they did over on, on Maplewood. They tore down the house over on Maplewood and built a new one. And they built that, I'm so sorry. They built that entire house right up to that original building line. So that, you know, garage and whatever, that's, it's, it's right up there. Whereas the old house, I think, had, was a little bit, more of the house was back than forward. And now more of the house is forward than back. So it has that appearance. And also, the new house is much wider than the old house was as well. So you have that much more of the, the street yard that is kind of filled up almost than had previously been.
In your example, the existing house is L-shaped and you said that they could not fill that in except for filling it in with a porch? Is that what you said?
No, I'm saying if we changed the ordinance as Commissioner Palatier was talking about, would it be following the drip line of the house? This no longer becomes an area where somebody could put a porch, because then it would be an encroaching porch. Whereas currently, they could build a porch there. It would still be behind the setback line and, and they wouldn't need a variance for it. If we require us to follow the drip line the entire width of the house, then that, again, that takes away that, that option. Just so you have an idea of what that change could do to a property. It has its benefits, but then it also can open up a different can of worms as far as like front porches would go or, depending on the angle of a street and things like that, somebody might have been able to do addition where now they wouldn't be able to do an addition onto their house because it would look funky or it wouldn't meet another setback.
And having two minimum street yards wouldn't work?
No, I think that could work.
That's what I...
I think it's a, you know, we have in there a method for measuring front yard versus corner line. You know, take the tangents and where they meet. And that's how you can measure the lot width and see if it meets the minimum lot width requirements and things like that. So we could work with that and say, you know, it shall be the minimum on this street and the minimum on that street as opposed to establishing it for the entire street frontage.
And that would be for corner lots?
That would be for corner lots.
So looking at the diagram on page three. Any desire to change the text on there? To again emphasize that the survey, the plat, takes priority? Or just leave it as is? I hadn't thought about it until looking at it just now.
So striking out as identified on the WPA Housing Setback Survey could be an option?
You're the end user, so you tell us.
I would say take that out, similar to what we did in the bulk table. And we can...
Does the Preservation Commission get to see this?
Yes.
And they'll vote on it before it goes to the board?
Yes.
Any other comments?
So I can work with Attorney Mars on how to change the corner lot issue to establish two different, you know, a front yard and a corner side yard. One along each street frontage as opposed to entire street frontage.
Please.
So that helps eliminate that issue of a very small street yard all the way around.
So I'm looking at a house, a corner lot, and on one street, it's the corner of the house that would be the nearest point. Well, you guys will figure it out. I'm wondering if that would allow the house to be too big? But I'll let you guys think about it. Any new business?
I don't believe so at this point. We do have an application in for a variation, so there will be a public hearing for the next village board or for the next planning and zoning commission. next village board, or for the next planning and zoning commission meeting. It is another porch. Have fun. So...
Sorry, front porch, you said?
It's a front porch. So that will be coming, that's coming down the pipe for the August planning and zoning commission meeting. And then we can do, if you're, think we're ready for it, we can try and make these changes, do a public hearing for a text amendment at the next meeting as well, if you're comfortable with that. Or if you wanna see another draft of it again before we publish for a public hearing.
Preservation will have had time to see it?
I typically don't take it to preservation until after the guys have reviewed it, at least, or had your public hearing on it.
Do you think we're ready?
It would be nice to get the input from our other two board members, given they were here when this was written, and the WPA issue.
Commission members.
I'm sorry, commission members, thank you.
So we can have another crack at it? I may not necessarily know that there's a big hurry to get this, this through at this point.
I hope we do that.
Further discussion at the next meeting?
Bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay. I'll make those changes about the corner lot. And do we wanna keep out the reference to the WPA in the first one, and just reference it for where there's vacant lots? Or do we wanna still keep it in there?
I understood that to be the consensus, that that first A regarding WPA would disappear, but we'd still reference it later on for the vacant...
That's why I just wanted to double-check on that one.
It's okay to reference it, because you give the options if there's disagreement.
Okay.
And you'll take out the village paying for any plans of survey?
Yes.
Yes. I kinda figured somebody would say something about that, but I left it.
I made Sunny put that.
He made me put it in there. So thank you, Teresa.
Motion to end the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We usually do a proposal on this one.
Okay.
Call on favor?
On favor.
Aye.
Are you opposed? All righty, thank you, everybody.
There's some edits to serve.